We call the meeting to order. The Wilmington City Council like to welcome all those who are with us this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, before we get started with the meeting, I will have to announce, I will have to have a roll call since we have one council member that is joining us through satellite. Is Mr. Waddell, whose wife just had a baby boy. So Luke, good to have you here.
Good to be here. Appreciate y'all giving me some consideration to be remote today.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, are you here?
Here.
Councilman Ravenbark, are you here? Councilmember Spears, are you here?
I'm here.
Councilmember Waddell, can see you're here. Councilmember Andrews, are you here?
Here.
Councilmember Joiner, are you here?
Here.
And the mayor's here. We're all here and accounted for. And at this time, I'd like to call on Sergeant Ronald Evans of the Wilmington Police Department to please give our invocation of everyone will stand or remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your continued grace and your mercy that you bestow upon us each day. In these times of uncertainty, we ask that you continue to protect us from the seen and the unseen. Cradle us in your arms and hold us close to your bosom. Lord, we pray and lift up this council to you tonight. We pray for the city staff. We ask that you continue to guide their hands and their heads and their heart. Give them wisdom as they prepare to make and continue to make decisions that will be beneficial for the citizens of the city. After all is said and done, we will be so careful to give your name the praise, glory, and the honor in which it is due. In your son's precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several presentations this evening. The first presentation is a proclamation naming May 2025 as Bike Awareness Month in the city of Wilmington. And I'd like to call up Caroline Caggy, Steve Zinder, and Karen Mills of the WMPO Bike Ped Committee, the TDM Chairman, and a number of others. City Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas the month of May is observed as National Bike Month, and Wilmington City Council is committed to the promotion of safe bicycling for both transportation and recreation. Whereas, on average, fifty-seven crashes involving bicyclists occur annually in the Wilmington region, which underscores the importance of ensuring driver awareness and bicyclist safety education in addition to safe facilities for bicycling to prevent crashes. And whereas the city of Wilmington is committed to promoting the safe use of bicycles on the city streets and the trails through bicycle facilities such as the Gary Shale Cross City Trail, the River to Sea Bike Way, the South College Road Trail, the bike lanes intersection improvements, and the bicycle facilities included in the city's 2014 transportation bond projects. And whereas the city of Wilmington supports education about bicycle safety through the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, better known as the WMPO. Bealooker, which campaign, which encourages children and adults to operate their bicycles in a safe manner and educates drivers on how to share the road with bicyclists. And whereas the city of Wilmington supports the annual River to Sea Bike Ride, which begins and ends in downtown Wilmington and includes community support and sponsors by local businesses, including Two Wheeler Dealer and Port City Java. And whereas the city of Wilmington has been designated as a bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists since 2011 and continues to make improvements to benefit the bicycling community. Now therefore, the Wilmington City Council proclaims May is Bicycle Awareness Month and will continue to promote safe cycling opportunities for Wilmington's citizens. And I just want to say thank you for everything you folks have shared with us over the years. It has given us the direction to continue to put in bike lanes and bike trails through our community, which people love. And we can see them now proliferating in Brunswick County and other parts of New Hanover County. And I just want to say thank you for that, for those great, that great piece of advice because it paid off. And it seems like the citizens have supported it throughout the years through a lot of bond transportation projects. So thank you very much.
Mayor Saffo, thank you. Council members, thank you very much. On behalf of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the WMPO, we really thank your commitment for the safety of our, of our citizens, especially in these times of economic uncertainty. We appreciate the commitment you guys have made. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next proclamation is naming May 12th through the 18th, 2025, as Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame Week. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Louise McCall, her group from the Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame, to please come forward. City of Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas founded in 2005 by the esteemed head football coach, Bill Dooley, the Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame recognizes individuals who have made a significant impact on the sports in the Greater Wilmington area. And whereas a nonprofit organization, the Hall of Fame, is sustained by the dedicated service of its volunteer board of directors and the generous support of local sponsors and community members. And whereas the Hall of Fame strengthens the community by celebrating those who have influenced the sports world and by promoting sportsmanship, excellence, hard work, teamwork, and leadership through its events, scholarships, and outreach. And whereas the Hall of Fame administers the Bill Dooley Scholarship Program, which annually awards scholarships to high school student athletes selected by that year's inductees who demonstrate excellence in academics, athletics, and citizenship, helping to cultivate the next generation of leaders. And whereas since its inaugural class in 2006, the Hall of Fame has celebrated up to five individuals each year, preserving our community's rich athletic history. And will culminate in the 2025 Legends Induction Banquet on Sunday, May 18th, where the following individuals will be honored for their outstanding contributions to sports. Scott Braswell, Kimberly Crabby, Tommy Craig, Dr. David Miller, and Jerry Wainwright. Now therefore, on behalf of the Wilmington City Council, I, Bill Saffo, do hereby recognize May 12th through the 18th, 2025, as Greater Wilmington Sports Hall of Fame Week. In the city of Wilmington, honoring the achievements of these inspiring individuals and the Hall of Fame's ongoing commitment to celebrating athletic excellence and fostering community pride. And it's been an outstanding class year after year, and it's amazing how many athletes have come from this area over the years and the contributions they have made to sports in any endeavor, whether it be the collegiate level, local level, or at the pro level. So Louise, thank you for everything you've done for this committee and this group, and glory's yours.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce Gina DeChico. She is on our board, and then Joe Brown, and just was inducted into the Hall of Fame last year. So we do want to get you up here, Joe, at some point. We do give out up to five inductees a year. We've inducted over seventy athletes from the region into the Hall of Fame. We've given away seventy scholarships to high school students to go to college. There's about seventy to eighty on a waiting list that still haven't gotten into the Hall of Fame. And we'll end this Hall of Fame and start the next one when it's over. The eighteenth is the banquet. We've sold out with over five hundred people coming. So it's been a good thing on golf. Golf is sold out on Saturday at Muni. So we're supporting that course. But I would just like to thank you, Mayor, and the council for giving us this proclamation and recognizing the sports and the athletes from our county.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's take a picture. Aquaneta Beatty, who's the chapter president of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. We've got a lot of them here in the house. Let's bring them all up. Come on. All these lovely ladies in red. Well, we're gonna bring these many people up. We need the entire council up here, too. Come on. Come on up here. We got some around this way. We got enough room up here. How you doing? Very good. Good to see everybody. Well, this proclamation is recognized on May 23rd, 2025, as eighty-fifth, eighty-fifth chapter anniversary of Wilmington's North Carolina Lumina Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And what a sisterhood it is. So I am going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to turn it over to the lovely president. Okay, very good. City Wilmington, North Carolina recognizes, whereas Wilmington, North Carolina Lumina Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was established on May 10th, 1940, as the Alpha Phi Sigma Chapter by sixteen African-American women residents of the city of Wilmington, with the purpose of providing service to the community in support of the sorority's mission in celebrating eighty-five years of continuous service. Whereas members of the Wilmington, North Carolina Lumina Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated became the first organization of African-American women in the city of Wilmington to secure a bank loan used to purchase a property located at 401 North Seventh Street, which became a hub for the chapter's activities and service to the Wilmington community. Among the activities hosted at the house throughout the years have been an annual health fair, senior citizens dinners, and education slash information meetings. The Delta House was designated as a historical home in 2016 and continues to serve as the chapter's primary location today. Whereas the city of Wilmington encourages nonprofit organizations to nurture our village with programs consistent with the sorority's five-point thrust focus on economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical, mental health, and political awareness and involvement. We acknowledge the continuing contributions of the Deltas to the health and well-being of our broader communities, serving residents in New Hanover, Brunswick, and Pender Counties, offering a series of financial fortitude workshops, weekly health moments on Coast 97.3 radio, enrichment programs like Delta, JIMS, Betty Shabazz Academy, and Jabberwock Scholarship pageants, emphasizing youth development, annual college scholarships for high school seniors, as well as establishing an endowed scholarship at UNC Wilmington, voter registration drives, and sponsoring the laundry room in Eden Village, the city of Wilmington's first tiny home community to create permanent homes for the unhoused. Whereas an observance of its dedication to service on May 23rd, as the eighty-fifth anniversary gala themed a legacy of excellence rooted in service, will be held at the Cape Fear Community College Union Station Daniels Hall from six to ten. Chapter members are honored for their vision, resilience, and commitment to this community, and current members are celebrated for their tireless efforts to build upon that legacy. I just want to say thank you. That was a long proclamation, but thank you. Thank you for your outstanding public service to your community, to our community of Wilmington, North Carolina. Continue the great work, and you look great in red. But here's your president.
Thank you. Greetings, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Saffo, to our council members. Thank you so much. We are just so graciously appreciative of this award. We have worked hard, eighty-five years of service to Brunswick, New Hanover, and Pender Counties, focusing in on service, social action, sisterhood, and scholarship. So it is our privilege to be here, and we are so grateful, and I am so grateful to the members of my chapter that are here today. So thank you so much.
So picture time. Pictures over here. Our next presentation is the City Manager's 2026 Recommended Budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce FY26 Recommended Budget. The timeline that you can see here shows budget benchmarks. And as you know, we've already had work sessions November, January, and March. We have two more work sessions for council in May. We have your public hearing at your next meeting, and we have budget adoption in June. I want to begin with the budget's revenue components. The FY26 budget is three hundred and six million dollars, with the general fund located in those operating funds, fifty-one percent of the total budget at a hundred and fifty-six million. And the capital improvement funds are ten percent of the total budget at thirty-three million dollars. The budget, the developed budget is, includes a reevaluation of assessed property values. The estimated assessed values totaled three, thirty-five billion dollars, or fifty, and went up fifty-three percent. The recommended budget is prepared with a real tax, property tax value of twenty-eight and a quarter cents per one hundred assessed value, which is one-tenth of a cent more than the net neutral rate, continuing the practice of rounding to our quarter of a cent. The value of one cent is almost three point five million dollars. The split now represents twenty-two and four fifths of a cent going to the general fund, and just over five and three-fourths of a cent going to debt service. So what is the reevaluation? The reevaluation, according to state law, requires that the city publish a net neutral rate. That net root, neutral rate encompasses the rate that matches the revenue from the previous year, plus a built-in growth factor. This enables the public to understand if there is a tax adjustment in the current fiscal year. So what is the implications for our average resident? The homeowner whose property value was approximately the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in fiscal '25 will now see a value at three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Under the net neutral calculation, the results in, in an annual increase of just under twenty-five dollars. With the rounding to the nearest quarter, the homeowner will experience an annual increase of twenty-eight dollars, just three, three dollars more. And now to focus on the general fund. FY26 General Fund is a hundred and fifty-six million, and the majority of that you can see is being spent on public safety, followed by general government, which encompasses those support services. Property tax revenue has an overall increase of just under six percent, mainly due to redistribution of property tax rates split between the general fund and the debt service. This budget proposes three fifths of a cent in favor of the general fund to be shifted in the recommended budget, and details on that shift will come further in this presentation. The allocation of sales and use tax is the most challenging forecast because it's dependent on the economic environment as well as consumer confidence. We did plan for a three percent growth rate over FY25's year-end estimates. That assumption resulted in an overall sales tax category of an increase of four and a half percent with a budget of forty-six million dollars. And now to show the FY26 budget highlights. Discussions with council occurred early in the fiscal year, focusing on how to address the difficulties in attracting and retaining personnel, personnel, especially in our public safety departments. A comprehensive compensation analysis revealed that the pay scales for mid-level public safety roles fall short of market standards. It also highlighted other job categories that had similar, that were similarly under market value. Addressing this challenge became a priority for FY26. Additionally, a priority was to continue our multi-year CIP program that continues infrastructure improvement citywide. Staff needed to balance these two priorities while ensuring continuation of community services, and we did that both through prioritization and maintaining financial sustainability. Like economic cycles, the city experiences phases where the gap between ongoing expenses and funding widens. Currently, we are confronted with unusual inflation, limited revenue growth, market, labor market pressures, and unpredictable nature of state and federal policies, all which impact the financial prospects of the city. Although revenue growth remains relatively stable, it is failing to keep up with the rising costs and the demands faced by the city. This disparity places significant pressure on our ability to reinvest. So this year, staff went through several budget exercises. Each year, departments are asked to assess their current services, service levels, to identify ways to enhance efficiencies and service delivery, reallocating resources as needed, before seeking additional funding. This year, we were faced with the challenge of limited revenue and the necessity to have a competitive compensation package. Departments explored strategic alternatives to address their needs within their existing budget without asking for new resources. The second exercise, departments were tasked with suggesting sustainable service level reductions proportional to their share of the general fund. And then the third exercise involved reviewing financial distributions, such as the property tax split, debt service management practices, and so on. These processes proved challenging for all involved. However, the departments approached it intently, offering thoughtful recommendations that were grounded in community priorities. The following are the results. The city is updating the pay scales and ranges for our public safety positions to ensure competitive compensation. Three years following certification as a firefighter and a sworn police officer, the opportunity to advance to a senior level role will now be available. Additional, we are realigning other pay scales to reflect current market value and raising the minimum wage to for regular employees to seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents. With regard to health insurance, costs have risen by eight percent since last year. Currently, employees cover thirty percent of their premiums, which is significantly higher than many jurisdictions, according to our benchmark study for health benefits. Raising employee premiums would only further widen this disparity. Therefore, the budget recommends fifty dollars a month reduction for employees' share of the health premiums across all tiers to help us become a little more competitive. The city will now offer proactive screening, cancer screening services for uniform firefighters. The financial support will facilitate screening, occur at a minimum of two, every two years for all uniform firefighters. The Safelight program was launched through a collaboration with a private vendor. With funding shared between the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County, the city did manage that program. By law, all the fines that collected are redirected to the New Hanover County School System. The city has decided not to renew the contract for Safelight. Instead, it will replace existing cameras with city-owned ones, thus allowing the public safety departments to have access, and this will generate approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings. Recommended for the city clerk is an addition of a city assistant city clerk to manage the rising volume of public information requests, as well as the work associated with boards, committees, and commissions. The recommended budget does eliminate two programs to help us get us to that target. Since the city transferred food and beverage operations to Greenfield Lake in twenty, at Greenfield Lake to Live Nation in 2021, the city's concession program has not been financially viable. As a result, the budget recommends discontinuing the concessions at Legion Stadium, which is used primarily by New Hanover County High School, and discontinuing Olson Park, which is serving an adult softball league. The monitored police unit is also suggested for reduction. The specialized division uses trained horses for various tasks, such as patrolling, crowd control, and community engagement. Primary operations is in downtown. Considerable resources are spent grooming, feeding, transporting, and preparing the horses before they go on patrol. There is also weather restrictions on their use. While these programs do enjoy community support, they are not deemed essential, and the savings could be more effectively utilized to help us with that competitive compensation package. Through the budget exercises, departments found areas where collaboration was possible. Zoning and code enforcement teams reviewed responsibilities and found some transferable duties that resulted in one vacant zoning officer reduction. Parking management will share a half cost of human resources administrative specialists, resulting in the elimination of a fiscal support specialist in parking and a savings to the general fund. Other service level adjustments made by the departments amounted to one point one million dollars in savings. Operation and maintenance underwent changes necessitating some increases in contracts for our public safety contracts. But despite this, departments successfully reduced expenses related to business travel, training, and software licenses. Most of the savings, however, is attributable to vacant positions, including roles such as an accountant, fire administrative manager, asphalt operator, and a small engine mechanic, to name a few. Nonetheless, the addition of a few positions was warranted, including a fire captain to aid in the training and recruitment in the fire department, and a horticultural specialist and a recycling and trash manager to help streamline the span of control, providing more manager-employee interactions in the field. In fiscal year '24, a change in the property tax rate, amounting to one point one two cents, was redirected to the debt service in support of the acquisition of property. With council's dedication to the sale of surplus property, directing those funds to paying off the variable interest in the debt service associated with the Skyline Building, we have an opportunity to shift almost a quarter of a cent of the property tax rate back to the general fund. Recommendations also from staff are to deobligate the rail realignment project. The application of the remaining funds in that project to put toward the debt reduction also helps us shift more allocation back to the general fund. The parking fund is strong. It's moving towards a self-sufficient enterprise fund, allowing for early repayment of a portion of the Skyline parking debt, debt. And will release a small fraction of a cent to be redirected to the general fund. Furthermore, we believe that the sale of certain properties, negotiation will occur in this or the forthcoming fiscal year. Therefore, we're including revenue for the portion of those sales in the upcoming budget. The action will yield an additional one-fifth of a cent to be reallocated to the general fund. In total, these adjustments will result in two point one million dollars, or three fifths of a cent, being redirected to the general fund. Few highlights for our enterprise funds. Parking is balanced at ten million dollars. The budget includes contract increases related to security, management, and credit card fees. Because parking is now sustainable, there are a few transfers that will continue. The parking fund is transferring two hundred and fifty thousand to both the general fund and the recycling and trash to support activities not associated with our indirect costs, but with but with services rendered in and around the parking facilities by our operating staff. An additional transfer to CIP for deck maintenance is budgeted, and there will be an incremental fee adjustment relating to all permits. Last revised in 2019, these include annual long-term visitor and short-term visitor permits, and this is supported by the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee. Stormwater is balanced at $16.3 million. The budget includes the continuation of a nutrient program for Greenfield Lake. Transfer of funding for Clear Run Branch and the annual stormwater drainage rehabilitation will be sent to the CIP. A fee adjustment recommendation will be increase the equivalent residential unit to just under $9, and they will be adding two part-time positions, which were previously intern opportunities for GIS and outreach, education outreach. Recycling and trash is balanced at $13 million. Recycling tipping fees were reduced in the budget, and refuse tipping fees remained flat. They are adding that manager to help with the span of control, and we do not have any fee adjustments recommended for that fund. Golf is balanced at $2.7 million. The budget does have its first repayment of the $400,000 that debt provided them for the irrigation project last year. A few leases related to maintenance in golf carts have increased, and they are proposing fee adjustments for cart rentals and punch cards programmed for FY26. What are the next steps? The budget document will be available to the public at the following locations: the City of Wilmington's website, City Hall, the Skyline Building, highlights on social media, GTV, and it will be in the downtown New Hanover County Library. As a quick reminder, the upcoming budget benchmark, you do have a work session on the 16th. We have a public hearing, your next council meeting, and another work session in the last part of the month, followed by adoption. As you move through reviewing the budget, if there are any questions, please contact the city manager or myself, and we will help facilitate those questions so that your work sessions on the 16th and the 30th are productive. I thank you for your time, patience, and guidance during this budget process.
Thank you. Any questions? And then we'll be talking to you folks. We have two more meetings, two more budget meetings before this document.
Mr. Mayor.
Before we vote on... Yes, sir, Mr. Waddell.
Ms. Mortel, can we anticipate a preliminary line item by the May 16th workshop?
Yeah, we can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other... anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Our next item business is our consent agenda. I will note that Item C2, staff has revised the resolution. I believe that is in everybody's package or should be in everybody's package. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? Okay, very good. So we have Items C1 through C7. What are the wishes of council in respect to the consent agenda? We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Barnett. Yes, sir, Mr. Waddell.
Item C3, I have a couple of questions on.
Okay, C3. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So we have C1 through C7 excluding C3. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Waddell. Mr. Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Sappho. This may have been touched on yesterday's agenda briefing. I apologize if so. Basically, just in this charging smart program, curious if there's any anticipated short or long-term costs to the city? Matching funds, installation, maintenance, ongoing operational expenses? And if so, are there funding sources or partnerships that we think would help offset these costs, or is this more just a preliminary program that we're signing onto?
We have Mr. Mays that is going to be addressing that question, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Waddell, I think the short answer to your question is no. This is a program very similar to another program that City Council endorsed called Soul Smart. The program is really intended to provide means and methods to streamline the effort to allow for electric vehicle charging infrastructure to be installed mainly through the permitting process, the zoning process. So in this program, they've developed about 150 different criteria that organizations like cities or counties can go through and establish protocols within their processes, check off and achieve certain level designations within the program, exactly parallel to how Soul Smart works, but this one's for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. It's not necessarily applicable to us, but it's applicable to public as well as privately-funded infrastructure. I hope that answers your question.
So this plan isn't really... It's not the city going out and installing infrastructure in various locations, public and private. It's really just... It's like the Soul Smart program creating the framework for that to happen at the public and private levels.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Not a problem, thank you.
Happy to move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. Four speakers have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. First speaker is Mr. Daniel B. Gray, who will be speaking to us about the Wilmington Police Department. Mr. Gray? Is Mr. Gray here? Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Cheyenne Woods, who will be speaking to us about DEI rollbacks and targeting. Is Ms. Woods here? Okay. Third speaker is Mr. Benjamin Groters, who will be speaking to us about drug and crime epidemic. Yes, sir. Make sure you just raise that microphone so we can hear you.
Yep, so since the other two aren't here, I get 15 minutes, right?
Five minutes.
No. I don't have much anything prepared, but I wanted to come in front of you guys today and in front of our citizens to address an issue that I think all of us are pretty aware of going on in particularly downtown area but all over Wilmington, which would be an increase in homelessness, which is leading to drug use and crime. And I think my proposition to you guys as our elected leaders is what are we doing to stop that? Particularly with an issue that, you know, several people, citizens all over this county and this city are seeing. It's apparent in our front yards, in our backyards, in our streets. You come downtown, it's very apparent. And I think that, you know, I've had several conversations with the police department about stuff that they can do, and I think there's obvious limitations there. And I really don't think that the solution is an enforcement issue. Drugs, alcohol, addiction, mental illness, all those things personally, I think, need to be addressed with compassion, and I think that we need to formulate some sort of plan, or you all need to formulate some sort of plan that addresses this issue in our city. Within New Hanover, Pender, and Brunswick, the point-in-time count was roughly 600 individuals. That's a lot of people, but like really, it's not a lot of people. You know, how many tens of thousands? More than 100,000 people use the city every day. So 600 seems like a small number that we ought to be able to overcome. Some positives are there's plenty of food in the city. We talk or I approach or am friendly with several homeless individuals, and food is abundant. Shelters are abundant. The Salvation Army that's being built just down over MLK is great, but it's not solving the problem. So there's a missing link that is not being addressed. Either it's, you know, something that is the city's not doing, or education for these people, or it's warm here. That can, you know, definitely be something that's leading to that. Notably, this transcends race, and it transcends sex. There's people of all prides, creeds, everything, that this is a problem. And like I said initially, it's not necessarily like, you know, homelessness is not the problem. It's that why are these people there? And most of the time, it's due to mental illness or drug use, or one of the other leads to the other. And while these people do live in our margins, they shouldn't just be left there. And while they're left there, they're not being helped, and then it's degrading the whole city that we have. And there's been an immense amount of money and investment down in our downtown area in our city, which is fantastic, but this is kind of overshadowing it. You come in from any of our other cities in the state, and you come into downtown, and I mean, you walk on Front Street and tell me that there's something that shouldn't be happening there, or there isn't something that shouldn't be happening there. There are people who are visibly intoxicated or on drugs and make people feel unsafe. And I don't think that's the impression that we want to leave for people coming and visiting. And certainly, as property owners and property owners, I don't think that's what we want Shout out to the police because I do appreciate their efforts. I think that there are some limitations with what they're able to do, and our EMS and fire who come to these scenes where people are, you know, incapacitated in one way or another. Just driving to work this morning, I saw some guy padding some guy on a... He was leaned over a curb, stopping whatever those things are that stop cars from going into buildings. He's just slumped over there, and he's kind of padding him. And, you know, that's a tough scene, you know? That's somebody's brother, could be somebody's dad, definitely somebody's son. And I think it's sad that we... It's a country problem, but it's a smaller city. We can confront this. So yeah, I just wanted to come before you guys. I think everybody's aware of it, but shall be said. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Duncan Murray Barefoot III, who will be speaking to us about City of Wilmington budget items. Mr. Barefoot?
Good evening. Wilmington is a city haunted by its history. In 1898, a white supremacist coup destroyed black political power, black journalism, and black generational wealth. That violent legacy was never repaired, and stolen wealth was never returned. Today, when we look at the numbers of the budget, when we follow the money, we see that the legacy of violence from 1898 still exists today. It's alive and well because we invest more of our money in starving people or patrolling them or criminalizing them than we do in feeding them or in sheltering them, which is quite relevant to the speaker who was addressing concerns of unsheltered people, the gentleman who spoke before me. 46% or soon-to-be 47% of the general fund is allocated to public safety, but I think something like 100 million or more... Mr. Mayor, do you know if it's more than 100 million that's given to policing?
Policing is 50... About 50% of every municipal budget in this state, sir.
But that would be more than 100 million.
That's all public safety. That's fire and police, sir.
Well, I think there's like, is it 100... Was it 137 or so about?
I don't know the exact number, but you're probably very close.
I think that last year, it was around 137 million altogether, including fire, but 100 million of that was for policing. The point of that, why that's so relevant, is because only 2.3 million is invested in affordable housing, and only 700,000 is allocated for all human and health services. That's for the whole city of hundreds of thousands of people. 319 Wilmington residents are unsheltered in tents and alleys and cars, but I think we all know that the numbers that are given for that officially are underreported. The city's response is surveillance, not health services. It's fines, not more food, and it's surveillance, not more shelter for unsheltered people. Meanwhile, Wrightsville Beach received last year, I think, $13.6 million for sand, and we all know the income demographic that is going to benefit most from sand at Wrightsville Beach. To be clear, beachfronts are protected, black neighborhoods are policed. The rich are fortified, poor people are punished. What actually creates safety, and this is proven all over the country by the country's best scholars, is healthcare, housing, healthcare, and community, not overfunding police, not criminalizing poverty or dehumanizing humans. While our local budgets are starved, our federal tax dollars vanish into war. In 2024 alone, Wilmington taxpayers, taxpayers of this city contributed over $9 million to fund a genocide in Gaza. And the UN Special Repitores, Human Rights Watch groups, Amnesty International, they've all concluded that it is a genocide and not a war. Still, there's no outrage from this council, no statement. We've been asking for a statement and some pushback from the federal government. There's no defense of the families here in this city that need that $9 million to survive. So I know all of you would like the budget to be larger than it is. There's so many programs that are underfunded, and you want more funding for them. And part of that is that we're asking that there's, if not pushback, at least a statement that when there are this many people who are not fed and hundreds of people who are unhoused and unsheltered, and there's only $2 million for affordable housing, only $700,000 for all health and human services last year? That is why we cannot afford to have 9 million to create a genocide. The pattern is bigger than Wilmington, too. After devastating floods in western North Carolina, federal aid totaled just .2 billion. In the same year, 18 billion, more than 18 billion, was given to the genocide. Wilmington received 700,000 again for social services, while 9 million was given to genocide. It's not a funding problem. It's a system of theft. That 9 million is taken from taxpayers, and it's used to create harm.
I'll give you a few moments to wrap it up.
Thank you so much. The system of theft reaches from Gaza to Market Street, and it is on a national level. It's a mirror of abandonment from Appalachia to Palestine. It must be named and fought here at this local level. You all have moral authority because of the chairs that you occupy, and you have a platform. And we, as a group, all of us, are asking for you to use your platform. We demand that this council publicly denounce the federal government's use of the residents of Wilmington, of their tax dollars to fund genocide abroad. And just as urgently, we demand that you restructure our local budget to reflect real safety and humanity to fund affordable permanent housing, community gardens, food justice, education, and healing to fund the future. Because budgets are not neutral. Budgets are moral documents. Thank you.
Since we had two late speakers that made the cut because we had four, is Sarah Moxley here? Ms. Moxley will be speaking to us about concerns regarding the use of our tax dollars as a Wilmington citizen. You'll be allocated five minutes, Mayor. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Tonight, I would like to follow up on the concerns that we raised at the last meeting on April 15th. As we've said, in 2024 alone, we as Wilmington residents paid 9 million, $74,000, and $781 in federal tax money to fund Israel's weapons. We asked you to take every action within your power to speak out and push back. Specifically, we asked you to, one, pass a resolution and make a public statement calling on the US government to end military funding to Israel; and, two, to use your platform to put pressure on North Carolina state and federal representatives to oppose that funding. Tonight, I would like to use my time to give you an opportunity to respond to our concerns. Tonight, I would like to use my time to give you an opportunity to respond to our concerns. We want to hear from you individually or collectively. What is your response?
It's public information. You can say it anymore.
So you cannot respond to my questions during this time? You have responded to previous speakers before.
Ma'am, excuse me. I'm gonna have to ask you, either you want to finish your, whatever you want to say, or I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. That's it.
Okay. I will keep going.
Okay, thank you.
Over the past three weeks, Wilmington citizens have emailed you currently 455 letters with the specific asks that I mentioned earlier regarding our tax money going to Israel. None of us have received a single response from anyone on this council, to my knowledge. So again, I ask you, what is your response to Wilmington citizens who have sent you these letters? Since January 2024, that's almost a year and a half, we have spoken at almost every meeting regarding our government's support of Israel as they kill Palestinians, block humanitarian aid, bomb hospitals and refugee camps. You have not responded to our ceasefire resolution public comments in the meeting itself, or responded via email to the 220 letters sent from Wilmington citizens asking you to support the ceasefire resolution. And you have responded to other public, public comments that people have made, but you have not responded to any of ours. You have not been willing to add the ceasefire resolution to the meeting agenda to allow for the voting process to even take place. So please help me understand, like genuinely, what do you need from us as citizens for our specific asks to you about tax dollar allocation money to be added to the agenda? We emailed you an invitation to hear the firsthand experiences of healthcare workers who have been on the ground in Gaza at an event at UNCW. No one responded to that invitation. The ceasefire choir has sung outside before city council meeting almost every meeting since last February. For most of that time, we only received an acknowledgement via a wave from one city council meeting, city council member. More recently, a few of you have at least made eye contact with us and given us a short wave. We even sang during the last city council meeting with choir members raging from nine years old to 83 years old. So we have spoken in the public comment section, written emails, signed petitions, sung, and invited you to educational events. So genuinely, what do we need to do to get a response from you, our representatives? What would it take? Help me understand, what is the process here? If you are unwilling to give a response at this public meeting, are you willing to meet with any members of our group to discuss our concerns about Wilmington tax dollar allocation? Can I ask for a show of hands? Is anyone willing to meet with us to discuss this? So do you want your citizens to be engaged in local government? I don't know of any other groups who have been at city council meetings for the past year and a half. We are showing up. We are trying to be involved in our local government. So what else do we need to do to get a response from you? If you are not going to respond to your constituents' concerns, what is the point of these meetings? What is the point of city council? We are asking, as your constituents, for you to hear us. We are asking for a response.
And the last speaker that is asked to speak tonight is Kristen Morgan. Is Ms. Morgan here? Ms. Morgan will be speaking to us about the impact of genocide on education.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I feel honored to stand before you. My name is Kristen. I was born in North Carolina. I'm a North Carolina Teaching Fellow, and I've been teaching high school in our state for 11 years. As a teacher, I'm urging Wilmington City Council to do something different with our tax money on behalf of our schools and our children. The reason for my plea tonight, I don't want the city I teach in to invest in weapons manufacturing that sends weapons to Israel to bomb people in Gaza. Why would Wilmington, North Carolina, need to invest in weapons manufacturing for Israel? Our city should care more about its own people, right? Students and teachers practice active shooter drills all the time. Since I started teaching in 2013, I've had firsthand experience sheltering my students in my classroom while an active shooter was on our campus on three different occasions, and once, a student even brought a concealed gun into my classroom. The reality is that, public or private, anyone in academia in the United States can go to school and never come home. There was nine million dollars of Wilmington taxpayer money spent on weapons for another country, while students' lives are on the front line here, scared, shaking, right here in Wilmington on any given day, only miles away from where you sit. I've often wondered why the guardrails have been thrown off for our children in this way, why we want our children to grow up and safe, feel safe and proud of where they're from. Why do we constantly make excuses for violence towards our children, and wonder why they do not trust us as adults to take care of them? The excuse this past fiscal year seemed to be that Israel needed weapons more than our own children needed to feel safe. At least, that's the message that I've received. I wonder what millions of dollars even feels like? And not just one million, but two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine million dollars? How many safety precautions could we create for our children with that amount of money? If nine million dollars were distributed evenly to all 67 public and private schools in New Hanover County, each school would still receive 136,363 dollars. This could fund one additional school resource officer per school across the county for at least one year, for instance. Please remember my reason for my plea tonight. I don't want the city I teach in to invest in weapons manufacturing. You dehumanize not just the victims of the Holocaust happening in Palestine right now when you ignore us, but you dehumanize the citizens of Wilmington as witnesses to this genocide who identify with the victims. Please stand with us and pressure lawmakers to redistribute our tax dollars back to us. We need the money much more, I would say. I would like to read some anonymous writing samples from the people of Wilmington before I go. These are from a public ILM event about how our tax money is being spent. Sample A: "I understand that not every place in the world has a steadily increasing population, but here in Wilmington, it seems like our schools are becoming more and more crowded. We keep building apartments and houses with nowhere for these people to get jobs or go to school." Sample B: "It makes me frustrated that our government is supporting the perpetrators of genocide, and that the conflict has been going on for so long, and how merciless it is." Sample C: "There's poverty everywhere you go in Wilmington. The US government spends billions of dollars on new technology that we don't need, while they could be feeding billions of people instead, or helping families that don't get paid enough." Sample D: "The people in the Middle East that are needing to seek refuge in other countries. Their homes are getting bombed, and they're losing everything. I don't like that people are ignoring that this is happening. I want to see change, so people can have a home where they don't have to worry constantly." Sample E: "A genocide is happening to the people of Palestine, and while I may be American, it still concerns me, because the media is keeping quiet about it and silencing people who speak up about it. The people of Palestine are in deep trouble, and things need to change. Palestine needs to be freed, and no one deserves to have to live in fear, especially innocent children." Please stand with the children of Wilmington and Palestine. Put pressure on lawmakers to redistribute our tax dollars back to us instead of funding a bloody genocide. Our children don't deserve to live in fear either. Thank you for your time."
That concludes our public information segment. Our next segment is our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling at 613 14, South 14th Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the City Code, and directing that it notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. This was continued from our April 15th, 2025 meeting. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Brian Renner, our chief code enforcement officer, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council. So as I had mentioned yesterday in the agenda brief, what we've seen so far is the owner has put a new roof on the house. Nothing else has been completed since last meeting. I sent him a list of things that need to be completed in order to bring it in compliance with the city's minimum housing code. I've not heard back from him. I'm hoping that after this ordinance is passed, if it's passed, during that compliance period, that he'll, he'll follow through. I did also speak with the, the tenant today, and we've also had him in contact with our social service providers through New Hanover County and through Continuum of Care. They provided him with a series of referrals to various affordable housing units and senior housing, which, which he has at his disposal. I'm here if there's any questions about the current status of the case.
So it's looking good?
The, the roof is on. I have not heard anything about any continuing work, nor has the tenant, about completing the electrical, the, the mechanical, and then the other repairs on the inside of the house. But I have sent the owner a list that he can give to his contractor, and we're happy to speak with, with them about what needs to be done.
And you've had communication with the owner?
I've, I've had email exchange, the last of which was that he would have work underway before the last council meeting, which, as of now, he does have a new roof on it.
Okay, very good. Mr. Barnett?
I believe yesterday you said you talked with his daughter. Tell me a little more about that. How did that go?
So we've had communication with his daughter through our social services. That, that type of interaction, we, we try not to get too involved in with, with that relationship. They have provided her with those referrals as well, and that's been through the Continuum of Care. So we've been relying on our social service partners to do a lot of that engagement.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Is the homeowner here, or a member of the family here? Okay. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask for anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH1. Adam Clerk, have you received any comments, emails, phone calls?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion approved by Councilmember Ravenbar, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH2, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the City of Wilmington to rezon property containing 2.11 acres located at 710 North Carr Avenue from R10 medium-density, single-dwelling district to MD17 CD high-density, multi-dwelling residential district, conditional district, for a 48-unit senior housing development. At this time, I will recognize the city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick O'Mahony will overview this item for us.
And I will also note that whoever makes the motion on this particular item must read a consistency statement for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This site is located at 710 North Carr, and they're requesting a conditional rezoning. It is bordered by North Carr Avenue, Marjoram Way, and New Center Drive. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request. Here are some photos of the existing conditions along New Center and Marjoram. These are photos of existing conditions along North Carr. Here are photos of some adjacent properties and land uses. As mentioned, the site's currently zoned R10. It is surrounded by R10 zoning to the north. There is R7 zoning to the west. That would be across North Carr. And then there is some property that is currently in New Hanover County's jurisdiction, located to the east, and that is zoned R15. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property to MD17 CD multi-dwelling conditional district. This is for a 48-unit senior housing development. All units for this project will be dedicated as affordable senior housing, and they will meet the workforce housing rent limit requirements established in the city's land development code. The project consists of the four-story building you see here, shown on the site plan. It contains a mix, containing 28 one-bedroom unit apartments and 22-bedroom units apartments for 68 total bedrooms. There is a vehicular access proposed along Marjoram Way. Also, just want to note that the site plan shown here had, had some design adjustments from the planning commission meeting and the relocation of the dumpster off of North Carr Avenue, further interior to the site to meet code compliance. These are elevations provided by the applicant. And here's another view, looking as, along the site on New Center Drive. The site's located within a designated live-work innovation zone, area of opportunity on the comprehensive plans growth strategies map. It's also located along a major corridor and community connector road. The comprehensive plan promotes the dispersal and production of affordable and workforce housing units and senior housing units in all areas of the city, especially in areas near commercial centers. The development of accessible housing for residents, particularly near transit stations and corridors, is also encouraged. Therefore, staff believes the proposed zoning amendments consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, and that the request is reasonable in the public interest. Staff recommends conditional approval with the conditions in the case summary. Also, Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval at their April meeting. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant's here as well.
Are there any questions of our staff? Thank you, sir. This time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak on item PH2. The public information segment, his, or public meeting is set for 30 minutes. Come forward and speak, state your name, where you live, and speak into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jake Gill. I'm with the applicant, Wallack Communities. I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of background on the project, and I had a little presentation prepared to share with council and you, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right. This is a very similar presentation that we showed at our community meeting, as well as the planning commission. So the place, like Pat said, it's a 48-unit senior development. It is targeted at seniors 55-plus that have, are at the 30%, 50%, 60%, and 80% AMI.
Could you repeat that, 30?
30%, 50%, 60%, and 80% AMI.
Okay.
Correct. So first, to take a little step back, I wanted to just give a little bit of background on, on the company. We are a affordable housing, senior housing, and workforce housing development group. We've been around for six decades at this point. Most of our work has been in the Midwest, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, places like that. But we have recently completed our first project in Chatham County with strong, with a strong partnership with the, the Housing Department of the County, as well as the City of Siler City. We are fully integrated as well, so I work on the development side, but we do have asset management to make sure that the asset is performing over time and make sure that it's maintained. And we also have an in-house general contractor. So it's kind of a one-stop shop. If there's any issues that do come up, we're all in the same office and very close to each other. Just brief background, this was the project that we recently completed in Siler City. This one's a little different than the one that we're proposing here in Wilmington in that it's a family development. It's 72 units. But it was leased up within, within, I believe it was four months. So this one targeted 30% AMI and 60% AMI. And then just a rendering of the project. And then a project that we also recently completed in Northern Kentucky, Cornerstone Crossing. This was a senior development. This was 50 units. This one was also leased up very quickly, which, as we'll get into later, kind of speaks to the demand for this type of housing across the country, but especially in places that have often, I think, it's been a little bit difficult to, to find the land to develop this type of stuff. And these are some interior images from the Cornerstone project. And then, lastly, I think the staff touched on this, but on a And then, lastly, I think the staff touched on this, but on its place, it is 48 units, 55-plus. There are 28 one-bedroom, 22-bedroom units. We do expect construction to commence in May of 2026. We have to, this is kind of the first, one of the first steps, is getting the city council support, city council approval for the rezoning. And then we will go in for tax credits with NCHFA in Friday, technically, so fast approaching. And then they'll announce their awards in August, so that will really kick off to make this an official project. Like they mentioned, it is a four-story building. The amenities are pretty much normal to market. There's a business center, there's a fitness center, there will be a laundry room, there's some outdoor seating areas, as well as a multipurpose room to host resident events or public events. And this was the new site plan as well, and the rendering that he showed as well. And then, just for a little bit of background, kind of what we've accomplished so far with our community meeting, planning board, we're at the city council meeting now, and it just kind of lays out some of the major next steps as we hopefully submit on Friday with the rezoning approval. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions. I think that's my last slide. Any questions?
We have several questions here, sir. Mr. Joyner?
Hey, good evening. My first question, I was curious if you could talk to us about your access to public transit, since this is in particular going to be a senior space.
Correct, yeah. So we do believe that there is a route that runs along New Center with a transit connection. I believe it's behind the Target, if I recall, the WAVE Transit Center.
The main location for WAVE transits on that side of town?
Correct, yeah. And we do have, I don't recall if it's still accessible, but there was a stop at New Center and Carr Avenue as well. That was, I believe the sign was still there to access the major routes in the city.
Okay. And then my second question is, I see, I was looking at your amenities, and so it's going to be a laundry room, a shared laundry space instead of in-unit laundry?
There is a shared unit space provided, but there will be washer and dryer hookups in the units, but no actual machines.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Ravenbarke?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm real familiar with tax credit financing. Have you not received, you've not received your tax credits as of tonight?
Correct. We plan to, hopefully with the successful rezoning, we plan to submit our application on Friday, so the ninth.
Okay. It's not a guaranteed thing, my experience with them. I mean, you're the pro at this. I mean, you've got, you're all over, so you feel that confident that you will be awarded the tax credits, because otherwise, we've got a piece of property we've rezoned, and you're not here to do business.
Correct.
I don't want to sound so down and dirty, but that's kind of what, the way it is.
That's a good point. That is the business. We feel very confident in the ability to get the tax credit. I believe we were the only application in New Hanover County, and as you'll, I think, see later on in the agenda meeting, we have a request for some additional gap funding that I think also helps make the project even more financially feasible, as well as increases our competitiveness.
Yes, sir. I know that it's always been kind of a tradition where each county would get a tax credit, and then that doesn't happen. So, but you feel, is this size, this is pretty much your sweet spot, the size that you're doing here?
I think we've done projects, I mean, the previous one was 72 units. We've gone as high as, you know, 80, or we have a project that we're developing in Raleigh that's a 4% Lytec, that's 120 units. I think it just, this particular site, just because it's a little bit smaller in nature, we kind of settled on the 48 units for that.
How did you come to being in Wilmington? Did you just have it on your radar, or somebody recommended it to you, or how'd that happen?
Honestly, it was not awarded last year a 9%, which made it on our radar, because typically, most of the priority counties for the state always get tax credits. We've looked around since I've been at Wallack in Wilmington, but there's been an issue with finding land that actually scores competitively and is reasonably priced. So this kind of checked all those boxes and allowed us to kind of hit the ground running with it.
Okay. That bus stop is kind of critical to a tax credit location, is it not? It always used to be.
It is. This particular project, just based on all the other amenities that are in the immediate area, from parks to the shopping center, the bus was a little less critical on this one, but it is something that's, we do look for, especially in more urban counties that have that service. We do try to locate projects
Okay.
close to bus service or rail service.
Best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Andrews?
I think you answered my question, so this is going to be a 9% Lytec project?
Correct, the competitive, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
Yeah, most of my questions were already asked. I guess, the only thing I'm curious about, you had the community meeting back in February. Were any concerns at that community meeting that you have met, or anything like that?
We had one gentleman show up, and I believe he's here tonight, that addressed some concerns with, I believe we talked about security. We did talk about parking as well. The security concerns are something that, we typically handle it in-house with how we handle our security, with lighting and cameras and things like that. So those are not entirely shown on the plans at this stage, but they'll be hashed out moving as we get further into the design process.
Okay, and I do like the project, especially because you're reaching out to seniors, and of course, it's being affordable. So, thank you.
Yeah, and sorry, not to, just one more thing. I think it's Mr. Rivenbarke?
Close enough.
Close, apologies. But we also know that the market here is very deep. There is a huge need. Out of the projects that I've done, it had one of the highest needs that I've seen in a market study, whether it be in the Midwest or the Southeast, anywhere. So that was also a contributing factor of wanting to find something in New Hanover County.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. Since that was the applicant's presentation, now the public hearing will be opened, and anybody in the public who wishes to speak, please come forward, sir. Public hearing's open, sir.
Mike Mizada?
You can speak up.
Mike Mizada, Angel Fish, 506 Angel Fish. My concern is just parking, because I had the same issue across the street. We're way under parking. I need 169 parking spots. I only have 144. And HOA, you know you can't change nothing, and I'm trying to change that to get us assigned parking. Everybody gets two, but everybody has to three if you're a three-bedroom. So that's my only concern, is parking.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hovis. I reside at 205 Forest Hills. I'm here on behalf of the Cape Fear Housing Coalition. I'm actually this year's chair for that organization.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. But on behalf of the coalition, I want to express our support for this project. We see it as a great mix of percentages that will serve a multitude of seniors that aren't really being served in our population now. I've been very impressed. We've watched the applicant through the process, and as a group, we full-forward supported it. I don't need to go, and they put the information out there very clearly, and just wanted to express our support, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Joyner, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Mr. Joyner, will you please read a consistency statement for the record?
Thank you. I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezon property located at 710 North Carr Avenue from R10 medium-density, single-dwelling district to MD17 CD high-density, multiple-dwelling residential conditional district for a 48-unit senior housing development, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan, based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning provides additional housing options, places residential density near services and in proximity to transit, and is compatible with the surrounding area.
Okay. All right, ready to vote? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ravenbarke, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item 01, which is an ordinance amending the various projects and grant funds for adjustments and corrections from budget to actual funding and expenditures. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martha Wayne, our finance director, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and council. The ordinance before you this evening is amending various grant funds. As we work through the fiscal year, we identify items that need adjustments to budget appropriations in order to accurately reflect the activity. This ordinance includes multiple CDBG and home grant adjustments that adjust the budget appropriation for actual program income inactivity. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for our staff? Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. One of the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Ravenbarke, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmembers Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to item 02A, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations in the amount of $2,513,506 in American Rescue Plan funds to address homelessness assistance and supportive services. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel Schuler, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Director, will overview this item for us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. This ordinance is to make appropriations from the American Rescue Plan. These were home American Rescue Plans that were awarded as part of our entitlement several years ago. An allocation plan was presented and approved by you in 2023. It was then submitted to HUD and also approved. The funding breakdown is just over $2.1 million for the construction of supportive housing. Request for Proposal Process has allocated those funds for Good Shepherd, for the construction of the Sparrow, that will be breaking ground very shortly. And so additional funds for supportive housing, or supportive services, excuse me, which is really those wraparound services that align with the permanent supportive housing that we see, and then some funding for nonprofit capacity building, which will help with some database. So those funds will be put out for RFP later in the future, but we have awarded the Good Shepherd project. And so, again, this is just appropriating the funds that we received from HUD. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We have a question here. Mr. Waddell? Mr. Waddell, I got Mr. Joyner, and then I will go to you, sir. Mr. Joyner?
Could you just remind us how many units we're expecting out of that project with Good Shepherd at the Sparrow?
Yes, that is 32 units.
32 units, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Waddell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Schuler, I know, first of all, that the Good Shepherd does a lot of good work, despite, I think, our ideological differences on Housing First policy, which I don't intend to rehash at the moment, but I just want to ensure these funds are, you know, go into the specific project and have a couple of questions in regards to that. I did pull the 2024 tax returns for Good Shepherd, and it looks like they spent about $300,000 in fundraising efforts last year, and then had about an $800,000 operating deficit, which I know is a nonprofit, so sometimes you do have those. I just want to make sure, how are we going to ensure that these funds, since they are ARPA and HUD's involved, that these funds are not going to go to supplementing budget shortfalls, and will in fact be going towards this project specifically? What type of reporting guidelines and deadlines are we looking at?
Absolutely. So these funds will be, for that particular project, we do construction draws, and so throughout the process, they will have different draw meetings where the architect certifications are signed, our development team, so our rehab specialists, as well as our facilities coordinator, will go out and inspect to make sure that the work that is being charged, according to their information, is the work that has been done. We also review payrolls to make sure that they are paying all of the contractors and subcontractors the required wage amounts. That's called Davis Bacon. So we're constantly monitoring the construction process, both onsite and doing desk monitors, monitoring, and we will continue to monitor that compliance later on throughout the process. We do annual inspections, both physical and then as well as financial, to make sure that any repayments, reserves, any of the funds that have been set aside are budgeted as appropriate for this particular project. So it's very thorough throughout, both the construction process and ongoing.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And then, so that's to the construction, but to the $300,000 in wraparound services, how long does that fund the wraparound services, and is there a plan that we are privy to on how those wraparound services will continue to be funded?
The $350,000 has not been awarded to any agency at this time. That will be a request for proposal that we will put out. That, again, will be one where we monitor whether it's reimbursements. I'm not sure exactly how that will be set up at this time, but typically, we operate on a reimbursement basis where they submit hours or invoices, whatever it may be, so that's how we would monitor that. And then, again, we would be looking at programmatically, looking through their files, how are they, who are they serving? Are they the right clients? Everything would be monitored on that, and then as well, again, on the financial side as well.
So that $350,000 is not specific to this project? That's for some future project wraparound services?
Yes, that is correct.
And then, once that funding is gone, for whatever program we would give that money to, will we have some sort of, what's the plan?
That is a great question. So for ongoing supportive services, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I guess, should we anticipate a budgetary item in the amount of 350-plus thousand to supplement wraparound services in the future, once this ARPA money has been depleted?
This is one-time funding, and so I would not anticipate that we would have those ongoing. Anything that we awarded would be known that it was a one-time funding grant opportunity. We have through, I believe it's 2030, to spend this money down. It's a longer time period than the rest of the ARPA funding that we've seen, and so we do have a little bit of time to spend that. We currently do not have any other funding sources that would support these wraparound services, so we would not anticipate bringing that forward at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then, is this total amount that's in this resolution, is that the full amount of the ARPA funding that is earmarked for this specific programmatic use?
Yes, this is the specific entitlement amount of home ARPA funds. Again, it's a little bit separate from the American Rescue Plan funds that were received through the general government, and so this was specific from HUD for these programs. They really spelled out how they wanted to see these funds being used. That's why the allocation plan was brought to you in 2023 with those specific criteria in mind.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schuler.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Schuler. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. One of the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Ravenbarke. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which are our resolutions. Item R1 is a resolution authorizing the displacement of private solid waste collection services in the Pond Crossing subdivision. At this time, I'd like to recognize our manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick Porter, our Recycling and Trash Services Superintendent, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council. Before you has a resolution authorizing the displacement of private solid waste collection in Pond Crossing subdivision. It's the displacement of private solid waste collection in Pond Crossing subdivision, it consists of the public streets Plover Court and Eider Lane. There's 12 residential homes located on those streets, and they are now required to have city recycling and trash services. North Carolina statute provides the process to displace the existing private service providers. Notices were sent by certified mail informing the company, existing companies of this meeting, and also published in the local newspaper for four consecutive weeks. The residents were made aware of the change in trash and recycling services during the formal street adoption process. Staff has prepared city service information, as well as cart side selection letters, that will be sent to residents should Council pass this resolution. We estimate about 30 to 60 days to coordinate the private carts to be collected and the city carts to be dropped off. We do not anticipate residents being without trash or recycling carts at any time in the process. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the wishes of Council in respect to the resolution, we have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item, which is item R two, which is a resolution rejecting all bids for the Hooker Road MUP, Hinton Avenue MUP, and Wrightsville Avenue and Greenville Avenue intersection improvement projects. At this time, I'd like to recognize our City Manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel McIntyre, our Project Manager, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of Council. Before you has a resolution to reject all bids for the Hooker Road MUP, the Hinton Avenue MUP, and the Wrightsville Avenue and Greenville Avenue intersection improvements projects. While these projects are individually funded through the WMPO via the Surface Transportation Block Grant Direct Distributable Program, they are in close geographic proximity and have been combined for design and construction. The city advertised the combined projects for bid on January 30. Bid opening was scheduled for March 25, but an insufficient number of bids was received to open. The bid advertisement was extended, and bids were opened on April 3. One proposal was received, which greatly exceeded the engineer's estimate and the project's overall budget. Staff's recommendation is that the bid be rejected due to an excessive bid price and no contract be awarded at this time. The engineer's estimate has been reviewed and updated, along with the contract proposal, and plan holders will be contacted. Staff recommends passage of this resolution and rebidding the projects, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ravenbark?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. How long is this process that you're advocating for take?
The rebidding process?
Yes, ma'am.
We, once we reject the bid, NCDOT has to approve the revised contract proposal and estimate. That was submitted last week. We've asked them to do what they can to expedite it. I'm hoping no more than two or three weeks, but we typically count 30 days. Then we could re-advertise. That would be 30 days, and then we would hope to get three bids.
So when you revise the engineer or the estimate, I mean, you're looking at your other estimate, and it's kind of compartmentalized, and you're just, you're revising it based on what you had. I mean, it's not like you're starting over from scratch. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. So our original estimate was last updated in November. So by now, it's six months old. They've looked at unit prices. Some went up, some went down, but they've updated them throughout the whole proposal.
Okay. So the bid that we got, I mean, it couldn't be, I don't want to use the word value engineered down, but it couldn't be, I mean, taking into account that our estimate was, what, six months, eight months old?
It was much more excessive than that. In general, NCDOT and FHWA, they can award or support awarding a contract if it's within 10% of the estimate. The one bid that we got, due to lack of competition, was one contractor that showed up for the original bid opening, the same one contractor the next time when we opened. The total was 60% over the estimate.
How much was his, how much over was his bid the first time?
2.7 million.
I mean, how much over our estimates was it?
It was, his bid was 60% over our estimate.
So he submitted the same bid twice?
No, sir. We weren't able to open it the first time. I guess my point was just that it was, one contractor came, there was obviously no other interested parties. We can't guarantee that he didn't go back and up his bid when he saw there was no competition. We felt that the bid price was not fair, and that a lot of the overage was in nine or 10 line items out of 118.
Okay. So when we recalculate our numbers, do you think we're going to be anywhere near 60% above where we are now?
It increased the cost, but not near that much, and we've identified funds to cover that gap.
Okay. To cover the gap between our estimate and what he?
Between the updated estimate and our old estimate.
Okay. Sounds kind of like we're beating a dead horse on this. I mean, we've got, this project has been lingering for a long time. Okay, thank you, ma'am. I know, I'm not holding you responsible for it. It's frustrating all the way around. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. One of the wishes of Council in respect to item R two, motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to item R three, which is a resolution authorizing City Manager to enter into an agreement with Wallach Asset Management LLC for gap financing for a new multifamily project utilizing $98,000 from the city home investment partnerships program. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel Schuler, or no, excuse me, Gilbert Holmes, our Housing Manager, will overview this item for us.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and members of Council. This is for a resolution to authorize the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Wallach Asset Management LLC for the Onyx Place Tax Credit Development. This Council heard and approved a resounding request earlier for this 48-unit senior affordable housing development. This request is associated with the development, as Wallach Asset Management LLC is requesting $98,000 from the Home Investment Partnerships Program Fund to support the acquisition of land. Oh, excuse me. Here, just a conceptual picture borrowed from their application. It is important to note that in the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency's application, its scoring criteria, as was mentioned, there are bonus points for projects receiving funding from local governments. Once completed, units will be available for households earning between 30 and 80% of the area median income, and this project will remain affordable for a period of 30 years. The application also notes an approximate project cost of over $14 million, meaning the $98,000 investment from the city would leverage approximately $142 per each dollar of home funds spent. As a result of this tremendous return on city investment, staff recommends approval of this request. Staff are available for questions, and Mr. Gill is available for questions as well.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. One of the wishes of Council, motion to approve by Councilmember Spears, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you. Item R four is a resolution authorizing City Manager to enter into a revised funding agreement with the Wilmington Housing Authority in the amount of $660,000. At this time, I'd like to recognize our City Manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel Schuler will now come forward and do this presentation.
Evening. Thank you again. This is a resolution revising the funding agreement with Wilmington House Authority. As we were working through the funding agreement, they did submit some updated terms, and so because they were listed in the prior resolution, we needed to bring that back up to your consideration. So this would, again, be a 0% interest loan to the Housing Authority. They are requesting repayment in 12 months with an unsecured loan. So representatives from the Housing Authority are here. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Barnett?
I just want to hear an update on where we are in Gervais. So that would be from...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gervais is the question? We're about actually to submit a tax credit application for Gervais. So we identified a development partner, Blue Ridge Atlantic, to work with...
Move your mic up a little bit more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We identified a development partner, Blue Ridge Atlantic, to assist us with the redevelopment of Gervais. So it's going to be not only a rehabilitation of the units, but it's also going to be the new construction of at least 90 units on the Gervais proper and also the Dawson property that we actually own. So we're submitting a 4% application sometime during this month. The portal opened up on May 1, so we're still putting some designs together to actually submit.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you. Mr. Spears?
Well, since Mayor Pro Tim was asking about Gervais, let me just ask about Hillcrest. I've got some questions about that. So where are we in the status of that project?
We submitted a 4% application back in January. We're awaiting announcements from the state on the tax credit awards. Same thing for Houston Moore. We submitted in January, waiting for a tax credit award announcement sometime this month. And for Solomon Towers, we're submitting a 4% application this month. We submitted on, actually, May 1. So actually, what you have now is the Housing Authority with four different redevelopment or rehabilitation projects going on all at once.
One additional question. The mayor and I, I don't know, how many years, two years ago now, we met with some developers out of Florida. You remember that? Are they still on board?
Yes, they're still on board. Ted C. and Urban Atlantic, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're still with us. So we're just waiting for a final announcement.
Real quick, I'm sorry, David, go ahead. Mr. Joyner?
Good evening, Mr. Garrett. While we've got you, we're just going to ask everything Wilmington Housing Authority tonight. I just wanted to give you the opportunity, while we've got folks watching online. I know that when we spoke last week, you said that one of your waitlists just recently reopened. I didn't know if that was still available, and folks should know.
Yeah, it was Glover and Solomon Towers. So those waitlists were open. They should still be open now. Residents from the city can come in, pick up an application, and actually submit.
Thank you.
Real quick, the units that you purchased there at Gervais, the buildings there that had been abandoned since Hurricane Florence, are y'all going to demolish those buildings or y'all going to rehab those?
No, those 18 are coming down. The rehabilitation are going to be on the other 73, I believe it is, 73 units that are still up and operating. Those are going to be rehabbed, because nothing happened after the weather event. Nothing happened with those. But the units that were actually abandoned and left with the fence around them, those are going to be demolished, and that's where we're going to put 50, at least 50 units on that site right there.
So when you said an additional 90-some units, are you talking about taking those down?
Taking those down, taking those down, because there was only 18 units there.
Right.
So we're going to put up, we're going to actually put 50 units on that particular location, and then come where, come out to Dawson, Dawson Street, where we have the Dawson Lofts. And you know, there's an adjacent property that is vacant right there.
Correct.
And open that parcel. We're going to put another 30 to 40 units there.
Fantastic.
Okay. So we basically combined the project. The project didn't pencil out at first with just the rehabilitation for the 4%. So what we did was we combined new construction along with it to make it pencil, so.
Congratulations.
Just a question. Since we got you here, what would you say to the citizens who are saying this is taking too long? And, you know, my mama lost her house. My grandmama is out. What?
I have to approach it. If you think back to where we were in '22, 2022, to where we are now, I don't know any other housing authority in the state of North Carolina right now with four redevelopment projects moving all at the same time. And these redevelopment projects do take time. It takes time to find a development partner. It takes time to find private equity to put into it. It takes time to develop the site plans and submit. And let's not forget, we're not on our own timeline. We're on this timeline of the state when we submit for tax credits. If it was up to me, we would have submitted, you know, or garnered private money or private equity in another manner to build the units. But we follow the timeline with the state to be prepared to submit our application. So unfortunately, once we get going, we're going. So the plan is to close on the two projects, Houston Moore and Hillcrest, by the end of this year if we receive the tax credits, and then move to our next set of redevelopment projects in the same vein. Usually, it takes about 24 months to build out, 18 to 24 months to build out an entire project or a phase of a project. So things are going to be happening. I just, you know, if I could move it quicker, I would. Just unfortunately, this is just the hand that we've been dealt.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate you all for your work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one of the wishes of Council in respect to item R four, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next and last item, which is item R five, which is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to approve variations to date and time restrictions for alcohol use at the Skyline Center. At this time, I'd like to recognize our City Manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Everhart will overview this item for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of Council. As stated in your packet back in October, you approved an ordinance allowing the City Manager to draft and execute a policy regarding alcohol use at the Skyline Center. He was given the authority under that policy to allow that alcohol use between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and during that period only, for various reasons. And that was what was in the policy and in the resolution. However, since during the actual practical, trying to put that into place, we've had several requests that have wanted to slightly alter the date or time for that usage or for those events that are going to be using the premises. Again, it's only allowed by your resolution to tenants of the building or to Wilmington City-sponsored events. And so that is not changing, but otherwise, we would need to come back to Council for every single request that had any slight variation. And so this is just a request to allow the City Manager to make slight deviations, so long as they comply with state law and with, and don't interfere with the business of the Skyline Center. And so that's what we're requesting at this time. But it would not change any of the other aspects of the resolution or anything else, so.
Okay. Any questions for Meredith? Okay, very good. Ms. Spears?
I think we are looking to get a new City Manager. You know, I would love to hear dissentments about stuff going that's going to take place, you know? No offense, Tony, you going out. I want you setting the table for dinner, and you're leaving.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. One of the wishes of Council in respect to item R five, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Ravenbark, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes six to one. This concludes the regular agenda. There are any items to be brought forward by our City Attorney.
Yes, sir. At the appropriate time, we'd ask you to enter into a closed session if you have that motion in front of you.
Okay, very good. Our City Manager?
No, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk? Mr. Joyner?
I just want to congratulate Councilman Waddell and his wife Amanda, and Luke Junior on welcoming a new baby boy, I understand. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, David.
Mr. Waddell?
I also wanted to congratulate, I'm Mr. Waddell, that's right.
Yeah. Luke?
Thanks, Councilmember Joyner. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all y'all's consideration for allowing me to be here remotely today. I do want to just take a minute and thank the doctors, nurses, and staff of Novant Health, Betty Cameron Women and Children's Hospital. I've seen it firsthand. It's apparent that these people have real love for what they do and a passion for what they do every day. Many of our nurses that I've dealt with directly are coming here straight from UNC Davie, straight from Cape Fear Community College, all of whom I've dealt with are extremely professional, extremely compassionate, and really impressive, hardworking individuals. So thank you to the hard work that they do for our community every day.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I would also like to agree with Councilman Joyner. I want to congratulate Luke and his wife for having a baby. And the neat thing about when you have a baby, is it's... And the neat thing about when you have a baby is that God is saying, there's still hope for the world. You know, when he allows people to be born, God is saying, I still have a great plan for the world. So congratulations, Luke.
Thanks, Cliff.
Mr. Ravenbarke?
Well, I can't let it go by without saying the same thing. So anyway, congratulations to Amanda. Anyway, just to decide, that last resolution we had, somebody called me, I guess it was today, and said, what the hell are y'all doing needing alcohol at City Hall? I said, well, we probably get a lot more done if we had a little bit down there. I splained it to them.
Ms. Andrews?
This Saturday, May 10th, 8 to 1:00 PM, there's going to be a rummage and plant sale at the Brigade Boys and Girls Club, Brigade Campus of the Boys and Girls Club at 2759 Vance Street. They may still be taking donations. If you have anything, just, you can call Jamie Howell at 352-7334.
Ms. Spears?
Yes, sir. I'd want to congratulate Amanda, not so much Luke.
You're here.
Little Luke. Now I've got another Waddell to deal with. But anyway, congratulations, Luke. I do want to say this, I may get a little teary-eyed, you know? This has been five years in a row, seven years in existence. My baby girl, she turned seven on Friday, Saturday, Saturday, and we just came back from vacation, and I tell you what, she wore me out. But she's growing up on me, man. She was just my little baby, and she is the last one for sure, but I tell you what, it's such a miracle to get to see her grow. So I'm just so happy to have her and to be her dad. And just to, also want to say, I know we're gearing up for election season, but I always say that we're in election season, and even after Luke's little thing to the nurses, it seems like he's gearing up for a little campaign, too. But I want to say that, you know, I believe that the election process and the competition that takes place in local elections, it should be organic, you know? So if people feel like they want to run and they feel like they've been put in place to run, let the competitive process take its natural course. And as long as people are doing things to make Wilmington a better place, you know, my hat's off to them, and I encourage everybody to participate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Amanda and Luke, congratulations. I hope you folks get some sleep. I know this is going to be, it's going to be an exciting time around the Waddell House, so congratulations, everybody. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session, and I'm going to read the statute. Is there a motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to the provisions of North